Welcome, everybody. Before we begin our council meeting tonight, we will have a prayer by Councilman Mark Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you for this day and for each day. We ask for your guidance, patience, and forgiveness. May we extend the same to those in our lives. May our thoughts be pure, may our words be kind, may our decisions be just. Blessed the men and women who serve our country. Father, we ask that all humanity may be granted peace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I'll now call the Monday, May 15, 2017 City Council Meeting to order. Mrs. Pell, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Hussy.
Here.
Kemna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Here.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. And before we do that, are there any scouts in the audience tonight? All right. I just had a couple in my office, and they were heading to a scout meeting, and we had a good interview, so, thank you. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. Item A, we have a proclamation for Dr. Kevin Rome. And, welcome, if you would like to come to the podium. We would like to take a moment to recognize you, Dr. Rome, for all of your service to our community. You have been a wonderful leader for Lincoln University. We have appreciated all you have done during the time you've served as president. So, I'd like to start by reading and sharing this proclamation that we have for you, and then would like to have some comments from you, and we'll get a picture together.
Right, thank you.
So, thank you. Whereas Dr. Kevin Rome has served as the 19th President of Lincoln University since June 1 of 2013, since his arrival and even in the months leading up to his officially taking the university's helm, Rome has been a catalyst for change, not just on campus, but in communities on a local, national, and international front. And whereas at the forefront of Rome's goals is increasing student enrollment and retention, in fall 2014, the university saw a 26% upturn in enrollment, and in fall 2015 welcomed the largest freshman class in recent university history. This positive increase can be attributed to Rome's push to find innovative ways to market to prospective students. And whereas, under President Rome's leadership, more students are choosing to start and continue their higher education at Lincoln University. In 2013 and 14, Lincoln University was recognized by the Association for Public and Land Grant Universities with the 1890 Retention Award. This award honors the land-grant institution with the highest percentage of student retention from their freshman to sophomore years. And whereas, his administration has also brought an expansion in academics, after more than four decades, the university's nursing program, which is consistently one of the most popular areas of study, transitioned from offering the Associate of Applied Science in Nursing to the Bachelor of Science in Nursing. In addition to new degree programs, Rome is leading the effort to internationalize the university. In spring 2015, the university signed an agreement with Korean National University of Transportation to offer faculty and students increased research and learning opportunities. Also, in spring 2015, the university entered into an agreement with the One Love Learning Foundation of Jamaica to educate students and farmers on sustainable, organic agriculture in the island country. Rome is leading other efforts to create a Lincoln University presence in Cuba, Brazil, other Asian countries, in addition to South Korea. And whereas, one of the most noted changes the university has seen under Kevin Rome's leadership is greater ties with the Jefferson City community. In 2014, Rome implemented the Blue Tiger Cubs Community United by Service Program, in which employees are given two hours of release time to participate in community service. President Rome serves on the Board of Directors for the Jefferson City Chamber of Commerce, the United Way of Central Missouri, Capital Region Medical Center, Central Bank, and is a board member for Missouri Campus Compact. And whereas, there has been a surge in community support and collaboration since 2013, including the mayor of Jefferson City creating a student liaison position to the city council, in 2015, the university entered into a partnership with Jefferson City Parks and Recreation to build a multipurpose center known as the Link on the Lincoln University campus, which will also serve as a wellness center for students. In a one-of-a-kind collaboration, the university also offered land to the Boys and Girls Club of the Capital City to build a facility near the planned multipurpose center. Now, therefore, I, Carrie Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation for the many years of service by Dr. Kevin Rome in the City of Jefferson. So, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
You will be greatly missed, but we are very happy for all the hard work that you've done in our community, so, we want to congratulate you.
I appreciate it. It seemed like an eternity when you were reading that. I said, "Please stop." But, Madam Mayor, to all the council persons, to the city administrators, community members, it has been a blessing for me and my family to be a member of this community. Our lives have been enriched and touched by so many great people in the community, and so, I feel like, no matter what we did, we benefited personally, my family, by more than anything we could have done, by the friendships, the relationships, the interactions that we were able to have in this community. And, I hope that this is just not a goodbye, but just, we will see you soon, because we plan to come back. Our kids' formative years were spent here, and so, this is home for them, and because it's their home, it's our home. So, thank you so much.
You're very welcome, and I know this seemed like an eternity when I was reading it, but that is a lot that you've accomplished in the four years you've been here, and it really shows. And this isn't, of course, even everything that you have touched in the City of Jefferson and what you've done in increasing enrollment and giving a bigger presence of Lincoln University in the community and around the country has been very impressive, and appreciate those goals that you've set and really going after that for Jefferson City.
We couldn't have done it without the city council and the support of the mayor and the community, because that's where it started, and so, I just hope that it continues and that this was just a tip of the iceberg.
Well, thank you, and we will keep doing our part, and any council comments at this time? All right, well, what I would, oh, yes.
Certainly, I must say that I'm gonna miss you, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve in the position in which I served. When Dr. Rome first came to Lincoln, he talked about partnerships, and he talked about the university and the community being one. So, I will never forget that date in which he called me to his office. It was a Friday at 4:00. A new president, you don't know what's about to happen. He invited me to his office, asked me to sit down, and he talked about this community, and he talked about the seriousness, the partnership, and how he wants this to be one community, one university. And so, he created the position in which I'm serving in now, and made it a cabinet-level position, in which I reported directly to the president and also the leadership team. So, I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve in which I am serving now and with the community of Jefferson, and I'm hoping that the next person that comes in sees the same benefit. He's gonna have some big shoes to fill, whoever he or she may be, but certainly, I'm going to miss you from the bottom of my heart.
Likewise. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. And at this time, I'd like to present you our proclamation in a city coin, and we'll all come forward, and you have a couple representatives from Lincoln if they would like to come up as well, and then the council will come up here and we'll have a photograph. Sure.
Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Good evening, everyone. My name is Willie Jude II, and I'm glad to serve as Executive Director of Philanthropy and Executive Director of the Lincoln University Foundation, and I'd like to share with you that my daughter is two weeks old, and she grew two inches already. Willow Joy Jude.
Yay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Watkins. I serve as Chief of Staff to Dr. Rome here at Lincoln University. I've been here for approximately two years, and just as the mayor was suggesting, that there's been tremendous growth in the partnership and the integration between Lincoln University and the community, so, we certainly appreciate it, and just as Dr. Rome mentioned, we hope that that strengthens in cooperation, because there's much more things in store than Lincoln and many others in subsequent years, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rolundus Rice. I serve in a variety of capacities. I'm the Chief Diversity Officer, Assistant Provost for Academic Affairs, and Dean of the Graduate School, and I want to commend the president and the city for bridging this impassable gulf that you all have brought so many disparate factions together, and all of us have benefited from it, so, thank you so much.
You're welcome, and we're very glad to have all of you here, and congratulations and best wishes to you again, Dr. Rome, for your future, and appreciate what you've done for our community. And, I know Mr. Jude has a little one at home, so you certainly don't, none of you have to stay for the meeting, and I know Joy, I'm sure, had a great first Mother's Day, so, but congratulations and thank you again.
Mr. Watkins has a little one at home as well, too, so...
Oh, well, congratulations, too.
Baby Emery.
Emery.
He's got two.
There you go.
So, I think they're going home.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
You're welcome. For B, we are recognizing Michael Shelman as Outstanding Employee of the Month for May, and Mr. Crowe will make that presentation.
And I would ask Mr. Shelman and Chief Schreider to come up, please. So, congratulations to Michael Shelman, City of Jefferson Police Department Records Clerk, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for May 2017. The recognition is not only for the specific examples referenced in the nomination form, but also in recognition of all the service Mr. Shelman provides to the citizens of Jefferson on an ongoing basis. So, I thought I would read a few of the comments on the nomination form, but not all of them, they are on our website. Some of the information is paraphrased, so, Mr. Shelman has dedicated over 30 years of his life diligently performing his assigned duties for the police department with pride, enthusiasm, and attention to detail. Mr. Shelman's strong, consistent work performance is never doubted and can easily be taken for granted. Mr. Shelman can often be found stopping what he is doing to assist fellow coworkers and city employees. Mr. Shelman's friendly and cheerful personality is infectious to everyone he encounters. Mr. Shelman often works longer than asked, often spending his weekend working at the police department to stay on top of his work. Mr. Shelman's dedication to his work is not to just get the job done, but to do his job exceptionally well. Mr. Shelman works with other record staff and often volunteers to help them with their workload. Lindsey Sullivan, Municipal Court Administrator, stated, "Michael is our go-to person for any assistant municipal court needs regarding records. He is always willing to assist and always projects a cheerful disposition. Michael is willing to go above and beyond. He will contact the officer himself and get the answers from me. Many nights, I see Michael walking out of the building after 5:00. He unselfishly works overtime to make sure the records section does not fall behind. Michael treats his coworkers with respect and has a great relationship with them. The records section staff does not have as many employees as they had in the past, so he and his coworkers have developed and maintain an efficient unit. Mr. Shelman's worth ethic never wavers, and he unintentionally sets an amazing example for others to follow, which he does through pride in his work. He has also consistent effort, and then, most importantly, with exceptional customer service. Mr. Shelman's customer service skills are exemplary. Lieutenant Pat McCutcheon of the Police Department stated, "Mr. Shelman is one of the friendliest people I know, and he always arrives with a smile on his face and is always approachable." Kara Sankey, Senior Accountant in the Finance and Information Technology Department, stated, "Mr. Shelman is always friendly and very courteous. When he's not able to answer a question himself, he points me in the right direction. I can contact him, and he is always willing to help me find the correct answer or person." Michael Shelman epitomizes what it means to effectively serve the community while being devoted to the public safety team. He does so with mutual respect, a conscientious work ethic, a willingness to take the extra step, and an always-present sense of humor. Mr. Shelman is the type of person we all aspire to be. Mr. Shelman's significant contribution to the overall quality of the city, of quality of life, is recognized and appreciated, so congratulations and thanks to Michael Shelman, City of Jefferson Police Department Records Clerk, on receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for May 2017. Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you so much for everything.
Congratulations, Michael. I would echo those comments. We're very proud of you, and thank you for your service to the City of Jefferson and going the extra mile every time for us. I appreciate it very much. And at this time, we'll take a photograph, and I'll come forward and present you a city coin and a note, and if council would like to come up here for this, and we'll have any police officers that are here as well would like to come forward with your photograph.
This is my spot now.
Yep, we have our spots. Yeah, I'm here on your front.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item five, public hearings. Item A, amendment for the final PUD for the property at 2725 Merchant's Drive, and we'll ask Mrs. Pell to read the bill.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a final PUD plan amendment for property located at 2725 Merchant's Drive.
All right, Mr. Sanders.
I have a PowerPoint coming in a moment, but the property is, has been forwarded by the Planning and Zoning Commission for your consideration. It is a PUD amendment. The property is located at 2725 Merchant's Drive. That's it outlined in black. The part of town is in the northwest part of town. Over to the west is, or to your left, is Runge Nature Center on the corner of West Truman Boulevard, and Highway 179 is the Gerbs, and you see Industrial Drive there and J.C. Drive. The property currently is zoned PUD with permitted uses of the M2 District and also medical supply and adult daycare. The owner of the property is seeking a child daycare permitted use. The reason for that is there's a need in our community for services for children 12 to 18 that need, that have developmental disabilities, and there is no service in town, so with the permitted use of child daycare, they'd be able to provide this service. The property owner has notified, actually went along the south neighborhood there, and left flyers with the property owners, and has gone out to do outreach to know, to let them know that there is going to be this process. The public notices have gone out, per code, to the property owners. Signs have been placed on the property, and it's been advertised. The Planning and Zoning Commission has approved this use unanimously and is forwarding it to you for your consideration.
Thank you. Before I open the hearing, any questions of Mr. Sanders? All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing portion for Bill 2017-7. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that bill? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion. Any council deliberation on 2017-7? Okay, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item B, rezoning .73 acres at 748 West Stadium Boulevard from C1 to C2. Mrs. Pell?
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning .73 acres of land addressed as 748 West Stadium Boulevard from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 General Commercial.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill, if adopted, would change the zoning from C1 to C2. The property owner has requested it due to the sign height requirements, which I'll address here in a moment. The property is there off West Stadium. They're outlined in black to sort of orient you to the northwest or to the upper right, excuse me, the upper right is Target. To the upper left is the Walmart Supercenter, and out to the left is Menards. The property is surrounded in pretty much all directions except to the east by C2 zoning. The property over there, you can't really see it, where it says Hyde Park, that is C1. So, the sign issue is the C1 requires a sign height of 10 feet or less. That was changed back in 2011 through a code change. It used to be higher. Right now, the C2 properties up to the north have signs taller than 10 feet, and actually, one of the city's largest signs is down there on the bottom corner, which I can't get my mouse to work, but basically, oh, there we go, to the right of my mouse is the Menard Sign, one of the largest signs we have in the city. So, the property owner is requesting a change from C1, which is Neighborhood Commercial, into General Commercial C2. I'd also like to note that some of the properties over on the east side of West Stadium Boulevard have signs that are higher than the 10 feet for C1. They were grandfathered in when the code change occurred back in 2011. I'd be glad to, oh, it's gone through all the public notice appropriately. Property owners were notified, it's been advertised, and there was a public hearing, and no one made any comments at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission did forward it to the council with a recommendation to approve, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing portion for Bill 2017-10. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion, and we will take up 2017-10. Any council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item C, adoption of Capital Area Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan. Mrs. Pell?
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri endorsing the adoption of the Capital Area Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan.
And I believe, will you be making the, okay, thank you, or Lieutenant Williams? No? No, I don't know why I have that on here. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So, I'm here to give a presentation on the Capital Area Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, which has recently been adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission as part of the comprehensive plan for the city. The plan was adopted by the Campo Board in October of last year. It was adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission in February of this year, or I'm sorry, in April of this year. It's been endorsed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it has been recently adopted also by the City of St. Martins, which falls within our Campo boundary. Are there any questions about Campo or what Campo is?
Does council have any questions? Okay.
No? Okay. I'll go through this pretty quickly. We did do a lot of public outreach. We went through about 12 committee meetings. We held booths at local festivals. We worked really diligently to get a lot of public input. We've built up about 300 email contacts just from this effort, and we reached out to about 1,800 individuals on social media during this process. I won't go through all of these goals, but in general, the goals for the plan include improvements to safety, access, and education concerning walking and biking. There's a focus on stimulation of economic development, encourage of community and regional involvement, and improvement of health and well-being within the community. In addition to adopting the plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission also adopted a set of strategies specific to Jefferson City. When we did this plan, we decided that for all of the communities within our Campo region, we would create a unique set of strategies for that community, so that depending on the size of the community, they could develop a plan that was very specific and unique for their community's needs. The one for Jefferson City includes improvement to sidewalk connectivity, a review of policies and ordinances, developing a signed bike route and lanes, improvement to connectivity and access to transit, improvements to trail connectivity, pedestrian bicycle safety, and improvements to tourism and economic development. Once the plan was adopted by Planning and Zoning and hopefully endorsed by city council, it'll be incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan, so we are just seeking endorsement by council, and if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Does council have any questions? All right, and thank you for all the work on this. I know, like you showed, it's been going on for quite some time, and you have had several opportunities for public input and really put all of that together into this plan, so appreciate all of the staff time. All right, so...
Isn't there some type of bike ride tomorrow, something like that?
There is tomorrow. Do you have that information?
There is a bike ride, I believe. It's for city staff, and I'm sure the council would be more than welcome to attend. There's a, I think it starts at noon, and it goes from here over to the Link, and then there'll be a short lunch and learn on bicycle safety and education topics over there.
Great, thank you. All right, any further questions of council? No? Okay, and at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the Resolution RS 2017-2.
Okay.
All right, and with that, then, I will open the public hearing portion of the, of the bill, or of the resolution. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against RS 2017-2? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and we'll take up Resolution 2017-2. Any further council comments or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hussy.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item six, there are no appointments by the mayor. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. And we have Mr. Burkhardt of the Status Report for the Ad Hoc Steering Committee to Review Building and Construction Codes. Oh, my.
Read through each and every one of them. It's gonna be a short meeting, right?
Welcome, I think.
I promise to be very short. Well, this is a report on the Ad Hoc Steering Committee. It's, let's see if I can get through operator. The council passed on December 21 a resolution forming this ad hoc committee. We were underneath the 2009 version, and so it was beneficial for us to start looking at more current codes of 2015 for health, safety, and welfare of the community, and also, it does infect insurance rates. So, this is just a refresher for the council. With that, they made a steering committee, and technical subcommittees were formed. The council actually approved nine steering committee members of the community, and they first met February 25 of 2016, and then they named five technical subcommittees to review. In total, 33 volunteers from the local community were involved, six owner developers, 11 design professionals. improvement to connectivity and access to transit, improvements to trail connectivity, pedestrian and bicycle safety, and improvements to tourism and economic development. Once the plan was adopted by Planning and Zoning and hopefully endorsed by city council, it'll be incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan. So, we are just seeking endorsement by council, and if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Does counsel have any questions? All right, and thank you for all the work on this. I know, like you showed, it's been going on for quite some time, and you have had several opportunities for public input and really put all of that together into this plan, so appreciate all of the staff time. All right, so...
Isn't there some type of bike ride tomorrow, something like that?
There is tomorrow. Do you have that information?
There is a bike ride. I believe it's for city staff, and I'm sure the council would be more than welcome to attend. There's a, I think it starts at noon, and it goes from here over to the link, and then there'll be a short lunch and learn on bicycle safety and education topics over there.
Great, thank you. All right, any further questions of counsel? No? Okay, and at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the Resolution RS 2017-2.
Okay.
All right, and with that, then, I will open the public hearing portion of the... of the bill or of the resolution. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against RS 2017-2? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and we'll take up Resolution 2017-2. Any further counsel comments or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hussy.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 6, there are no appointments by the mayor. Item 7, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. And we have Mr. Burkhardt of the Status Report for the Ad Hoc Steering Committee to review building and construction codes. Oh, my! Welcome, I think.
I promise to be very short. Well, this is a report on the Ad Hoc Steering Committee. It's... Let's see if I can get through operator. The council passed on December 21st a resolution forming this ad hoc committee. We were underneath the 2009 version, and so it was beneficial for us to start looking at more current codes of 2015 for health, safety, and welfare of the community, and also it does affect insurance rates. So, this is just a refresher for the council. With that, they made a steering committee, and technical subcommittees were formed. The council actually approved nine steering committee members of the community. And they first met February 25th of 2016, and then they named five technical subcommittees to review. In total, 33 volunteers from the local community were involved. Six owner developers, 11 design professionals, 11 contractors, and other five members that were related to construction. So, with that, we started reviewing the building codes. There was a recommendation from the steering committee to accept the recommendation from the Electrical and Plumbing Licensing Boards. Electrical looked at the 2014 National Electric Code, and then Plumbing Licensing Board looked at the 2015 version of the International Plumbing Code. The five, the codes that are showing up there right now are currently have been adopted by the city, the 2009 version. But we've added some more codes because of, upon further review. The International Existing Building Code, it's kind of a format change from the Model Code Committee that makes us the International Code Council. There was a Chapter 34 that was in the building code that no longer exists. They say you have to get, you have to adopt a special code for that. And actually, the same thing with the Mechanical Fuel, Mechanical Code. The building code refers, and this is all for commercial, to refer to the Mechanical Code. It's not in, it's not formally adopted by the city. The same thing with the Fuel/Gas Code, which mimics what Ameren is doing for the fuel/gas delivery to our homes and businesses. And also, we found some deficiency in looking at that and recommending adoption of the Swimming Pool and Spa Code. They did look at a couple of other codes. Wildland Urban Interface Code, that's more for the western states, Colorado, Nevada, where they have a lot of forest fires, and they have homes, expensive homes are built out, so it's not really applicable to our jurisdiction. And they looked at the International Conservation Code, Energy Conservation Code, and it was okay on the commercial side. The residential was a little bit too advanced for what the committee was thinking at this time. For the public comments, the steering committee met 15 times, and the technical subcommittees met 80 times. Most of the steering committee members were either chair or vice chair of the technical subcommittee, so there's communication back and forth between the technical subcommittees and the steering committee. We did have some concerns expressed to us from the Apartment Association concerning fire sprinklers. The committees, Fire Code Committee and also the Building Code Committee, had recommended to adopt as-is. So, what that means, that triplexes and above would require fire sprinklers, and that's only for new construction. The current code says above 10 units would require fire sprinklers, so this will, that'll be a change, and they approached us a couple of times in different meetings. Underneath the city website, we do have an update page on what we have been doing with the 2015 codes. So, constituents and other interested parties of reading the code... By the way, this will go to the city clerk's office for public comment or for public access. So, the city clerk's office has to keep all codes that have been adopted by reference, so if someone walks in, that they can access it. From now, we're looking at a couple of public comment meetings on June 1st and June 15th, thanks to the police training room. So, we'll try to get the word out. We do have an email contact list, about 100, 150, and then also, we'll try to get as much advertising out as we can. We do have about 70 licensed electrical contractors and about 40 licensed plumbing contractors, and they will be mailed versions of the code adoption bills directly tomorrow. And then, after those public meetings, the steering committee is planning to meet again June 22nd to make their final recommendation. Things go well, we could possibly introduce directly to the council agenda on the 17th all the different adoption bills, and we haven't added up how many there will be yet. There could be five, seven. It just depends on how it shakes out as far as formatting. And the way that we're recommending right now, that the new building codes will go into effect after the city council approval will be 60 days after. So, if it follows with everything, about the first week of October, we would be underneath the new codes. Future actions of the steering committee, they are also by the resolution to look at process. So, they're going to form another technical subcommittee to look at that, and that review will look at building regulations, process for plan review, permit intake approval, inspections, and building permit fees. I know that was real fast, but they told me to talk fast, so... But if you want to, these are all the codes that we would be looking at to recommend to adopt. There'll be 10 codes in its entirety. So, if there's any quick questions, but...
Thank you for the update, Mr. Burkhardt, and I know that we appreciate the community members that have spent time working on this committee as well, because that's been part of the process, is kind of bridging the gap between city hall and the public and making the codes that, I guess, just, just working with the community on it, too. So, appreciate that, that piece of it.
Well, thank you. We have some very talented people in town.
Thank you. It's a lot of work. I can only imagine going through all that. Was there any questions of counsel?
Comment?
Councilman Graham?
I just can't wait until the, the public comments are brought back to us, because I've heard a lot of comments about the sprinkler system requirement. So, I'll be interested to see as relates to the comments in which we receive out of the public hearing that's scheduled for, for June the 1st. I've, you know, had a lot of comments about, about that requirement, so...
It's mainly financial aspects?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions?
That was close to my comment, but I guess I'm interested in what efforts have been made to reconcile developer interest code and code enforcement and to bring about a reasonable consensus that considers both public health, safety, and welfare and the economic development interests of the developers. So, as we put all that together, can we still be a community that promotes health, safety, and welfare, the residents plus, still get the developer community to want to invest in the city? And I think that's the, that's what we need to protect, and yet, I don't know how we achieve that.
I wish I could say I did. The only thing, we also looked at Columbia, and Columbia has, has adopted the 2015 codes a year ago, last October, and their sprinkler requirements are currently in sync with what we're recommending. If you go out to the county, the county has a 2,000 version of the building code. And so, with their requirements for apartments, it's over 16 units, but they also have a two-hour fire separation between the units. The way the code is written now, we only can do an hour barrier between the units. So, the code is taking into account that you really need fire sprinklers, and I'm sure that the fire department, Chief Schofield would be glad to share a little bit in the future about the benefits of having a sprinkler system. It does save the building, it does save occupants. So, if you Google "how much is a human life worth?", it comes out to be about $9 million. If you talk to one agency, I think Department of Transportation says it's $7 million. So, the additional cost for a 900-square-foot unit, they were talking somewhere in extra $20, $25 a month rent. Would you like to live in an apartment that's sprinkled versus non-sprinkled? So, it's a very good question. I, I hope we can answer it satisfactorily.
Councilwoman Ward?
You mentioned the fire barrier wall, so that code won't be changing? It'll still just be an hour fire barrier wall?
Right, the, the, the building code is the main one. The residential code is still not, is... They're opting out of having sprinklers in single and two-family plus-town homes. So, this only affects the commercial, which is triplexes and above. So, it'll still be an hour, and that's was kind of a deficiency in the old code. So, a two-hour fire barrier will help contain or compartmentalize the fire a lot better than the one hour.
But are we looking at going to the two-hour or staying at the one?
The way the recommendation is right now is still be one hour, but would be with a fire sprinkler.
So, there is a cost savings there. We wouldn't be requiring, you know, a higher code?
It's more difficult to, to construct a two-hour fire barrier.
So, it would be cheaper to do the sprinklers?
Yeah, I didn't say it would be cheaper, but...
Well, I mean...
There's a, there's a cost trade-off, yes. The older code had a little bit more stricter requirements, but then they found out sprinklers do a better job, actually. So...
And I do think that particular topic will have a big focus of discussion, so I know we have the two upcoming public comment meetings, June 1st and 15th, and then you said they follow up with, you have the timeline on here, the other meeting where the committee convenes, and then it comes to council. So, it would be important that, I guess, if, as there's comments, that people could bring them forward, or to have the information out about the importance of why, why the committee's recommending those changes.
The Apartment Association has, they're the ones that are voicing, and they've pushed the Fire Code Committee and also the Steering Committee with their concerns. And so, they've been, discussion has been going back and forth. So, we're trying to address their concerns the best that we can.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt, for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Don't forget your books. All right. Item 8, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. We have four standing committees. You can find their meeting schedule at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Are there any council committees that we would like to announce this evening? Mr. Marash?
Yeah, on the Public Works and Planning Committee meeting that was scheduled for this Thursday, I've heard from a couple councilmen on the committee that they're not able to attend, and so we'll be looking for a new date for that to reschedule.
Okay, so, Public Works and Planning Meeting has been canceled officially?
It hasn't officially yet, but we plan to tomorrow.
Okay, because there wouldn't be a...
Yeah, we...
People, okay.
They're, our chairman and I believe our vice chairman will be gone at that meeting, so we'd like to reschedule. They've asked to reschedule the meeting.
Okay, and that's why it's important to check the website calendar, as we have those, make sure that gets changed on there as well, too. Any other committee announcements? And then, speaking of meetings, there will be a TIF Commission meeting this Thursday night, May 18th, and that's here at city council chambers, correct? In council chambers here, at council chambers on May 18th?
That's correct, 6 o'clock.
Thank you, 6:00 PM, thanks. And, item B, we have Mr. Sanders to make some announcements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two, two items. One is, this is Heritage Week. Tomorrow, in this room, at 4:00 PM, there will be a ceremony. There'll be several children that have won certain types of contests, art, multimedia, and essay contests, so that's going to be exciting. The landmark designation awards will be presented to the two winners this year. The Gregory Stocker Distinguished Service Award will also be presented. This activity is supported or sponsored by the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the city, Historic City of Jefferson. The other item is sort of along the same eye, same line of heritage and historical items. At the last Public Works and Planning Meeting, the topic of the Historic Preservation Commission's draft demolition ordinance was introduced and discussed, and after the, during the meeting, it was decided by the committee to have a special council work session to address the issue and to discuss it further. That meeting is next Monday in this room at 5:30 PM, and the agenda will be coming out in the next couple of days, and I'd like to invite the people that are interested in both of those topics to come to those two activities.
Great, thank you. So, work session then on May 22nd, and we'll see everybody here tomorrow, May 16th, at 4 o'clock for the Heritage Awards. And while you have your calendars out, there's a potential work session on Monday night, June 12th, for MSP update, looking at the master plan and the, we'll review the proposed, the legislation that passed the House and Senate, so we're working on coordinating calendars. So, this is still a tentative date, but that's typically our work session day, so put a hold on Monday night, June 12th, at 5:30 for a work session for MSP. And I'll give my announcements this evening. We had the law enforcement memorial last Saturday, which was a very moving service where people who have lost members of their family that serve in law enforcement have, have come to the Capitol to have their names read and place a flower in the wreath, and it's definitely a moving service, and Jefferson City Police Department was well-represented there at the memorial. That same day was the Shelby Fest, where there were several hundred Shelby's and people from all around the country that came to Jefferson City. It was a beautiful day for the Shelby Fest activities. Also, last week, I attended Officer Kevin Kempker's retirement celebration, so he'll be missed. And also want to thank the police officers who participated in the kids' safety picnic, which was last week. Councilman Schreiber also participated, because the Lions Club was a part of that, and that was recognizing all the kids that participate in their school safety patrol. Also, over the weekend was the Corvette Classic, and that was something that former Mayor Eric Strumpf started. So, I'm continuing that tradition in selecting a mayor's award winner, and so I selected a beautiful 1970 C3 convertible. But just because I selected it didn't mean I get to keep it, but I did enjoy it, looking at it for the day. And then, speaking of, of traditions, the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament is Friday, July 21st at Oak Hills, and that's a tradition that John Landworth started many years ago that I'll be continuing. So, looking for participation from the public, from any council members, anybody who wants to put on a challenge between any city departments. It is Friday, July 21st. And my final announcement is I did participate in the SSM Dancing with the Stars over the weekend, two performances on Saturday and Sunday, and I'm still standing. So, I did not win. I did not get to bring the big trophy ball, the dance ball, here to city hall, so I guess I will not be quitting my day job and going into dancing, but it was amazing performance. The thank you to all who donated. It benefited the St. Mary's Foundation Cancer Patient Care Fund, and they raised around $100,000. So, very impressive, and it was great to see the community support. And I'm sure you'll see our performances. They did film those, so I'm sure those videos will be released at some point. A lot of pictures out there. So, one thing I learned from the whole experience, I had a great dance partner. His name's Charles Stone, and he would always say to me, "Let me lead." And I'd say, "Charles, I'm the mayor. I'm used to leading. I lead the city. What are you talking about? Let me lead." And he said, "The one place is on the dance floor that, that he can lead," but once I walked out of the dance floor, I could lead the city, so that was fun. And we even did a flip, actually, two flips, both dances. You were there, Councilman Graham, so you saw it firsthand that I actually... And then David Kemna was at the Sunday performance, too. I might, I don't know if any of their councilmen were there, but they, it is true, I did flip. So, from now on, when you hear them referring to me as the flipping mayor, that's why. I swear, it's, it's all good. I'll take that as a compliment, but I have a new nickname. But it was, it was fun to learn to dance, to go into something like that with no dance experience when I got the call to participate. I don't know if I realized quite what I was getting into, but whatever it takes to help the community and help those in need and the cancer patients is really what it was all about. So, I reminded myself every time I would try to, and I didn't flip quite like that, but thankfully, I landed on my feet there, Councilman Prather. But, so, that was exciting. So, those are my announcements. Any other council announcements this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You want to tell us about the concert?
Oh, gosh, Concert Inside the Walls. Why, yes, we have a performer. Well, thank you. We have Wynona is coming to MSP. She will be here at the prison on Saturday night, July 1st, and it's our second annual Concert Inside the Walls. Thank you, Councilman Graham. So, I'm sure counsel will be learning her songs, and I will be, just like I did with Travis Tritt last year. So, if you missed it, there is a Facebook Live video of Mayor Wynona, who went to the prison to make the announcement there, and that was a lot of fun. But we're very pleased to have Wynona in the big noise is going to be here, so I'll spare you my singing this time. But as we lead up to the concert, and in fact, concert tickets are selling. I think people are used to it. They know they had the concert last year, so there's a lot of anticipation, and people are already out there getting the concert tickets and the meal. They're also going to have the, the dinner inside A-Hall, which sold out last year, and we anticipate that will sell out again. So, you can go online, SaluteToAmerica.org, and find all the information about Wynona, or Mayor Wynona, either one. Should have brought my, I'll bring it next time. So, any other announcements? All right. Item 9, Lincoln University Student Representative. I will give his update. Jonathan, of course, his last meeting was last, the last... Jonathan, of course, his last meeting was last, the last one we had, as he has graduated on Saturday, so very proud of him, and Lincoln University did hold their commencement over the weekend. So we will look forward when school starts, next session, to have a new council liaison. Item 10, Presentations From The Gallery On Specific Bills Are Resolutions. We do have three signed up this evening. First, we have Mr. Chris Graham for Bill Number 2017-9. Welcome, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome, thank you.
I appear in opposition to the proposed charter amendment to make the city prosecutor an appointed position. And I do that, one having been the last person that served in the capacity of all three. I was elected to the city attorney, and also the city prosecutor and city counselor. Fortunately, those have been evolved into separate positions now. The Charter Commission looked at this issue, and the reason I know that, my father served on the Charter Commission. We discussed the positions, the city officers, and which should be appointed, which should be elected. There was no interest in making that position appointed. I can reconfirm that tonight. Carolyn McDowell, sitting in the audience, she was also on that Charter Commission, and she confirmed what I recall. I think it's a mistake. The city prosecutor is prosecuting fellow citizens, and whoever that person is, they need to be responsible to the citizens of Jeff City, not the mayor, not the council, not the city administrator. You make that an appointed position, it opens a possibility for mischief. And I think the people of Jefferson City would want to keep voting for the city prosecutor. I don't see any groundswell of support. It's working fine, the old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." I don't know where this idea, I'm sure people mean well, but my opinion, it's not good government, it's a mistake, and I hope that the council would concur and appeal this proposal. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions this evening? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Charles Jackson.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, I rise to speak on the same topic. I sit in the court, I've been sitting in the court for the last year, as an advocate for the youth in our community. I think you need someone there in that position that's accountable to the people. Also knows doing that time, I've seen a few council members that have come through for a brief period of time, but do they really understand, or do you really understand what takes place? And the amount of time it takes for preparation, I've been in law enforcement for forty, going on 43 years, and it takes time preparation from the officer's standpoint to prepare for court, and I know it's the same thing from the prosecutor. I think there's about 15,000 cases, 13,000 to 15,000 cases, that go through the city court each year, and so it takes time for them to, the prosecutor, to prepare and present those cases. And I think the proposal is that a city council, city attorney would handle those responsibilities. And, you know, where would we find the time to do that? And also, what is the accountability? Is he accountable to the, he will be accountable to the appointing authority? So I would really appreciate you reconsidering and leaving it as an elected position. Also, Rule 37 of the Missouri Supreme Court limits what municipal courts can do. There's been a big change since the Ferguson incident, and I think that needs to be reviewed as to what you're getting yourself into if you make that an appointed position, especially under subsection, I think it's seven. It's very clear on what you can do as far as directing the municipal court to, as far as fines, and any pressure to levy fines and so forth. So again, we'd like to leave that as a position that's accountable to the people and not to a small entity. All right, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any questions? Thank you. All right, Mr. Jack Deacon? Welcome.
I'd like to thank the council, Madam Mayor, for all their service to the city. There's a lot of untold hours you all put in that no one really understands. And I also want to thank you for allowing me to have the time to speak about the pending stormwater tax ordinance. This has been an ongoing discussion for over 30 years, sometimes more lively than others, and right now, it's become a hot topic again, because, one, we had a lot of rain this spring, number two, there was a miscalculation on the downstream part of it, where the ice ring was flooded, that's been fixed. Satinwood has always been an issue, and with the development there, satinwood has really become more of an issue, same way with Edgewood. But it's not a crisis, it's a crisis only in our present, present future. I mean, we think it's a crisis, but it hasn't, we've been talked about for so long. I would like to see the council postpone this until April, and in the meantime, have a meeting in every ward, in every precinct, tell us what is exactly the problem in that ward and precinct, how it can be fixed, why it's a problem, whose responsibility of it? Sometimes it might, could it be the city's responsibility that they don't know about? Sometimes it's a private landowner's responsibility because of diversion issues. And then, once we do have the meetings, they'll tell us what's going to be torn up. Sometimes there's a whole lot more construction going on, tearing something up than they ever thought it was going to be to fix it. And I don't see, and once again, I don't see it as a crisis, I would just like to see you all put it off until April, we have plenty of time to think about it. But the only thing I heard about it, one person told me, say, "Put it on the ballot now, so I can vote against it." I just think there's too much questions to put it on the ballot now. And if there's any questions, I'll thank you for your time and answer any.
Thank you. Any questions this evening? Okay. Councilman Mahalovich?
First of all, thank you for your service on the Planning and Zoning Commission, talk about countless hours, appreciate that. Had you attended any of the meetings with Public Works?
No, no, and I will apologize for not being diligent enough to find when they were. I knew it was an issue, but I didn't know, I wish I would have been more astute in finding when the meetings were. That's, I did not know they were being held. I knew that we were talking about, but I didn't know it was going to be on the ballot.
Any further questions? Councilman Graham?
This, I guess, not from Mr. Deacon, but for Matt, as it relates to, I know that Mr. Deacon and I did have a conversation about this, so in regards to landowners who just own just empty land with no home or no commercial piece of property sitting on that, the cost in which that person who just owns just empty lot would be, you don't have to answer it now, but I guess during your presentation, if you could certainly talk more about that, because I know that that was one of the biggest concerns that I know that Mr. Deacon and I had had a conversation about.
There's a lot of fallow land, both east and west, especially in the Algoa area.
Right, and that was considered, and the final proposal is that there would be no fee, because the entire fee is based on the impervious development.
I'm glad you cleared that one up. But the other questions, I really do think need to be asked, especially, what are you guys going to tear up in each neighborhood? And what's it going to cost in each one? And really, do we need a 25-year tax? You and I are going to be here for the end of it. I don't know about the rest of them, but you and I won't be here, guys. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Deacon.
Item 11, Consent Agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bill's Introduced, 2017-11.
An ordinance amending Chapter 7, Boards and Commissions of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by modifying member requirements for the electrical and plumbing licensing boards.
Mr. Burkhardt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a staff-initiated bill to restructure both of the licensing boards, the electrical and plumbing. Those boards meet usually about once every two months, and they review applications for journeyman and master license applications. With this, currently, right now, the electrical board has eight voting members, and the plumbing board has five voting members. Two of the members of each board are city staff. The plumbing and electrical inspectors are named chair by city code, and plus, the director of Planning and Protective Services, designated, is also a voting member. It's kind of unusual to have city staff as voting members for what I would call citizen boards. With that, though, what's being proposed is to limit to each licensing board, five voting members, two contractors, two journeymen, and one utility representative. Currently, the electrical board has a utility representative ready from Ameren, but the plumbing board does not have any representative from any of the water providers. We did get confirmation from Missouri American that they are anxious to represent themselves on the board as a voting member. There's also a change to residency, and currently, the electrical licensed board members can be in Callaway or Coal County, and the plumbing board members are only restricted to Coal, so this would equalize by recommending that plumbing board members could reside in Callaway in addition to Coal. What we have done is to get both licensing boards approval for this modification. It was sent out to all plumbing and electrical contractors without any comments back. If anything, we got more positive comments. And then we introduced this to the Administration Council Committee, Council Committee, on April 26th, which they then made a motion to pass on to full council for consideration. Are there any questions?
Any council questions for Mr. Burkhardt? All right, thank you. 2017-12.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of the 800 block of West Water Street right-of-way.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Clark indicated, this would vacate some right-of-way along Water Street. Basically, it's clear up a titling issue with the property there, and the current owner has requested a vacation.
Any council questions, deliberation? Thank you. 2017-13.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Jefferson a cost-share agreement for a central Missouri multimodal port project feasibility study.
Thank you. And Mr. Marash, we also have some representatives of the chamber. I don't know if Randy would want to come to the podium to be here when you make your presentation, or if you would like to go ahead and...
Sure, I'll just give a short one, and I told Randy if there's particular questions, he can field those about it.
Okay, we'll bring you up, come on up to the podium, and Matt can give our, Mr. Marash can give our summary.
Yeah, just real quickly on the summary, it is a cooperative-type agreement, basically indicating the city would contribute $47,600, and all the three entities in it are the city, Callaway County and Coal County. It also, this also includes a supplemental appropriation from the fund balance to fund our share. And there's a pretty extensive PowerPoint in your packet about this information, but that's where Randy would come in, and if you have any particular questions about the ports themselves.
Great, and I'll let Randy give us a summary, too, and I do want to mention that there are kind of three different riverfront things that are sort of being discussed at the same time, so the port is completely different from riverfront access, which is the talk about going over the railroad tracks to the railroad, to the river. It's also different from the marina, which is a future master plan piece at the prison, and then we have the port. So three things that are completely different, so just to make that clarification, so there is no confusion. And Mr. Allen, would you like to add anything to that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. As Matt said, this, we would like for you to authorize, being a part of a cost-share agreement, to see about getting this port feasibility study completed. The timing is really good, because MoDOT is currently doing a statewide study on the feasibility of the 11 current ports in the state, and so one of the things that we need to do is we need to find out if our potential port is feasible, whether it has, you know, cost-benefit analysis to us, whether the sites, which we're studying two, one in Algoa and one across the river to the west of the City of Jefferson on the Missouri River, and also to be able to study the fact that there is market for barge traffic down the Missouri River. As many of you know, there is no active ports between St. Louis and Kansas City, and so we think this is the prime time to do it. There is lots of legislation pending, both in the federal government and state government, with regard to incentives for doing ports. So we think this is the time to do it. We can contract with the consultant that's currently doing the MoDOT study, and we think that would be beneficial. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Allen? Okay, thank you, and I don't know if you have some others here from the chamber as well, thank you for being here.
Ms. Ebono is here, the Director of Economic Development, and Janet Weckenberg, who's our current board chair.
Great, thank you. 2017-14.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Jefferson, Missouri, to enter into a lease purchase transaction with BMO Harris Investment Company, LLC, as lessor, with respect to the acquisition of certain equipment, and authorizing and approving certain actions in connection with the execution and delivery of said lease purchase transaction.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed ordinance approves four documents, master lease purchase agreement, equipment payment schedule, escrow agreement, and a tax compliance certificate, and an agreement with BMO Harris in relation to the financing of fire apparatus. The council has previously approved awarding financing RFP to BMO Harris. What this ordinance does is it specifically authorizes these documents, which bond council requires these documents to be approved by the council specifically, so that they can write their tax opinion, and the city can enjoy the benefits of having a tax-exempt, excuse me, master lease. Closing is set for May 19th, which is this Friday, after that time, the interest rate guaranteed by BMO Harris expires, so that is why we are requesting a suspension of the rules. If you have any questions, I'll do my very best.
Thank you. There's been a request to suspend. Councilman Graham?
Madam Mayor, based on the information that Matt has presented to us, and serving as the Chair of Public Safety, I would ask for a motion to suspend the rules and ask that this be third read.
Thank you, and I didn't have my mic on there, so I had asked for the request to suspend, thank you. Are there any objections to suspend the rules? Seeing none, we will take up 2017-14, if Mrs. Powell would third read that.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Jefferson, Missouri, to enter into a lease purchase transaction with BMO Harris Investment Company, LLC, as lessor, with respect to the acquisition of certain equipment, and authorizing and approving certain actions in connection with the execution and delivery of said lease purchase transaction.
Thank you. We've had the summary. Chief Schofield, anything to add to that this evening?
No, I'll be happy to answer questions and read the companion bill, follow-up to this, but it does require us to act in a certain amount of time, and that is a very competitive interest rate at 2.48%. And so that is why we're trying to expedite and really formalize kind of the arrangement that we had already previously discussed in that awarding of the RFP.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council or council deliberation? Councilman Mahalovich?
I got a point of order. Should we not vote it on that, that motion?
I don't believe it's necessary, it's just the charter calls for at least two objections to overrule a request to suspend.
Very good. Then I got a question with regard to the past arrangement. The past arrangement was structured in what way for the purchase of the fire trucks? It was...
Yeah, I can try to address that. The previous arrangement that we had was a turn-in lease, and the turn-in lease is where we never actually would own the equipment. We would lease it for a certain number of years, under certain requirements, with mileage limitations, and that that equipment would then go back, and our previous arrangement with Pierce Manufacturing was not only an arrangement for the equipment, but also for the financing. And so that was a turn-in lease, and this particular instrument is very different, and that is a lease purchase, but the intent is really a structured purchase program, where we own the ass... But the intent is really a structured purchase program, where we own the asset, and it's ours at the end.
Good, that, the terminology that's through me at first.
Yeah, understand, and we also struggle with the semantics as well. The lease, the concept of a lease for municipality allows us to enjoy a much more favorable interest rate.
Councilman Prather?
And there is no balloon payment at the end, correct?
No, that is correct. No, no balloon payment.
Further questions or deliberation? Okay, Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty seventeen, fifteen.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $4,755,986 agreement with Sentinel Emergency Solutions and Rosenbauer America, LLC, for the purchase of seven Rosenbauer Commander fire apparatus to replace the current frontline fleet for the Jefferson City Fire Department.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill is the actual contract with the manufacturer, and their authorized representative in Missouri, Sentinel Emergency Solutions is out of Arnold, Missouri. They are the Rosenbauer dealer for our area. Rosenbauer America is probably the number-two name as far as overall market share in the United States for fire apparatus. We've been very pleased with the specification process leading up to this point. We formed a committee over a year ago, has been working with three different manufacturers, two primarily here at the end, and they were unanimous in their vote to go with Rosenbauer, the recommendation to bring to you. So, this would, as the clerk indicated, include seven apparatus, which is all of our frontline fleet. And we believe that these, these fire trucks will serve the community well for many years to come. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Okay, thank you. Twenty seventeen, sixteen.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $27,059 agreement with Hutchins Telecom, LLC, for the Green Tree Sanitary Sewer Extension Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And this bill and the following one are companion bills, but basically, this is a construction contract with Hutchins Telecom. They've done sanitary sewer work for the city in the past and done, performed their job well. The, the project is the Green Tree Sewer Extension, so there's an area on the east side of town, five homes that are unsued at this time. They basically have their own collection, their own systems. But as those age, you know, they would like to hook onto the city. So, what happens is they've approached the city to design a system that they can hook into, and then they pay the cost. So, that's the second bill, is accepting the money to pay for this extension. So, the contract is just over $27,000, and the costs, and then the next bill would do it a budget amendment to recognize the money they, they are providing, which is a little over $5,000 a property. And the reason the two numbers are different is it also includes the cost of advertising the project, and then we had to also get a $500 easement from a neighboring property that isn't included in the project. So, that's why the numbers are a little bit different. But be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Okay, twenty seventeen, seventeen.
An ordinance amending the 2016-2017 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri within the wastewater fund.
Mr. Marash? Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I indicated that it's, it's to recognize the funds that the residents are providing, so that the ratepayers won't be responsible for extension of the sewer.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Item 13, bills pending. Item H, we've already taken up 2017-7, so 2017-8.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, calling an election in the City of Jefferson, Missouri, to be held on Tuesday, August 8, 2017, to authorize the city to establish a stormwater utility fee on developed property within the city, directing notification of the election authority, describing the form of the notice of election, and fixing the time when this ordinance shall become effective.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the bill actually places the, would place the issue on the ballot, the council would be placing the issue on the ballot of a stormwater utility. Would just get out of the way real quickly, I know there were some questions late in the day, and really, the clerk answered them, but I'll just go ahead and reiterate them for her. She can correct me if I'm wrong, but for this special election, the net increased cost would range between $6,000 and $10,000 is our clerk's best guess. And if you, I don't know if you need more, have any more questions about that? I'm certainly not the best person to answer that question, but if there's questions about it, we'd get that over with.
Councilman Mahalovich?
What is the last time we can act to have it on the August ballot?
I'll defer to Ryan, our attorney.
Questions are due to the county clerk by May 30th.
And I might make a clarification, too, on the, because when you said the net impact, so, and that, that is correct, but just, I want to make sure that people understand that the base cost of the election would be approximately $12,000 to $18,000, depending on voter turnout, and that is an average cost. And you're correct in saying the net effect, because it would be an additional six to eight, or you mentioned 10, if it were added to an April election. So, in April, regardless of whether it's April or August, you'll have a base election cost. So, the base cost the city would pay is the 12,000 to 18,000, whether it's in August or April. So, if it's an August election, it's, you said 10, but the approximate base cost is 12,000 to 18,000. Now, if it were in April and added on to the existing municipal election, the 12,000 to 18,000 is already there, so the net, the additional is the six to eight, or 10,000 estimate that you came up with, depending on what's on the ballot.
Yeah, just an estimate.
And that depends on voter turnout, how many issues are on there. The more that's on there, the higher voter turnout, the higher the cost. So, did I explain that correctly? Okay, so, August election, 12,000 to 18,000 estimate, April election adds six to eight to 10 on to that. So, while we're talking about cost, Mahalovich?
Are we aware of any other issues by other entities to be put forth on this in August?
Not at this time, although they have until the end of, I believe they have until August, I'm sorry, June, May 30th, May 30th. The ballot must be certified, so we're not aware of anything, but they would have until that date. So, Mr. Marash, we'll let you do your presentation.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up, since we were talking about the ballot language is what, is what the bill really is about. And so, I have a short presentation, most of you've seen it before, just about our stormwater finances and what we're talking about, what this would actually do. This just happens to be one of our last floods back on May 1st. We took this picture, and in the background, of course, you can see the little bridge has flooded out, and we had some residents on the other side of here, and, you know, so this has probably brought the issue to the forefront, as Mr. Deacon had indicated, that there's been some floods recently. In fact, five in the last eight months, so those, kind of some weather anomalies have occurred in this last year, brought this issue back to the forefront. But prior to that, we were already working on this slide, on the 20 million, we had a, we started developing over a year ago, a little over a year ago, about a complaint list, just track the complaints we were getting on stormwater that, that weren't being repaired. I think a lot of the council were getting questions about, you know, why is this hole in my yard for a year until you can fix it? And so, we just had so many of them, we developed this complaint tracking system, and that's basically just talking about spot repairs of the collection system, not wholesale replacement or any, any organized manner of replacement. But then you back up 10 or 10-plus years ago, more than that now, the city's stormwater master plan, they went through, and basically, it was looking at modeling and flood-related issues, and there was 30-plus million on there, 36, I think, was the number, but at that rate, who's counting a little bit, but a big number. At the same time, right after that, we went through a process, almost eight, nine-month process, like we had this last time, of talking about a utility and what, what the needs might be and the cost. And from that study, it looked like if we had about $2 million annually to address some of these issues, we'd be a little more proactive and organized about these replacements. And then also includes some of the flooding issues in there as well. But, and so, really, that's what this fee is based on. It's estimated to bring in about $2 million annually at, at the base rate. And right now, just so everybody has a feel for what we're spending, about $360,000 is our annualized cost out of the half-cent capital improvement sales tax. So, you know, obviously, we're out talking to a lot of residents after each rein, we have a person assigned to do that. It's not an easy job, and, and so, there is a long waiting list, but we do, we do maintain one and try to work our way through it as we go, but we tell people we do have a minimal level of service as it relates to stormwater at this time. So, go on to the next slide here. Sorry if you can't read that too well, but this is a slide we've had in our presentations over the last eight months, we've been talking about this, but, and by the way, all, those presentations are on the West City website, so you could go to the front page, and there'll be a link to direct you to these, so you can look at them for yourself. So, we've kind of, in those presentations, what we did is not only say, whoa, what's a city utility? What is it, and what would it pay for? We listed seven items that are potential funding categories, but we also, in those presentations, did a, like little case studies in maybe watersheds or various wards and neighborhoods, and we did about three of them around the city, so it gives people a feel for what we're talking about and the cost. But as you can see, most, it's obviously all based around stormwater, whether it's a replacement of the neighborhood collection system, flood-type projects, regional basins, maintaining some of the stream corridors, that's one of the things, that some of the maintenance on them allow more, you know, the water to easily pass through them, that's a big complaint we get often that we don't address. And then just looking at, you know, maybe a cost-share program of some type to help stabilize some of these neighborhoods, something similar to our wastewater program. So, that, those are kind of our cost centers, if you will, that we were looking at. As far as who would pay the fee, basically, everyone, every, all the parcel owners, every residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, not-profit, religious, educational, governmental is, would be charged a fee, similar to their wastewater fee, or their, or their drinking water fee. Basis for the fee, there's a nationally-accepted method for this called ERU, Equivalent Residential Unit, so that's the method our stormwater master plan outlined, you know, over 10 years ago, and many, many cities here in Missouri utilize the same thing now. But the proceeds would basically be things that pertain to stormwater, whether it's the operation billing collection, regulatory compliance, fixing the infrastructure, all those things would fall under this system, very similar to our wastewater system. And we did accept the public right-of-way and streets from this, because they are considered part of the conveyance system. So, if you can get the water to the street, then it can be, that, that's part of the collection effort, so we don't charge the pipes or the street. And feel free to stop me if you have a question as we go along, but I know a lot of you've heard this before. Just to kind of reiterate the chart, you know, it's very straightforward, trying to keep the, the thing very straightforward, or, you know, the more straightforward it is, the less the administration cost. So, we don't want to eat up the fee and create us to have to have a higher fee by parsing this up in so many ways, but basically, all single-family homes would pay the same fee, a flat fee across the board, and that's very common nationwide. $3.50 a month is the proposed fee in the first year. The duplex, under our zoning code, they're considered single-family, so each side pays the same $3.50 a month. All other classes, everything that's developed, so I guess the key word there, if it's undeveloped, as the question came in, they wouldn't be charged a fee, because it is based on the impervious. So, all classes of developed parcels would be the computed ERU fee. And I got an example here in town, as I indicated, just to show you that. But ERU, what's that stand for? Equivalent Residential Unit, so the median household size in Jefferson City is a little over 1,500 square feet, and to account for driveways and other impervious, we get that 2,500 square feet denominator there. So, that's, that's how we figure out what the developed parcels fee will be. And so, again, I got an example. But just a side note, we also indicate in the, in the language that there'd be a 2% annual adjustment, just to keep the fee relevant as we move through over time. Certainly, we have increase in labor and construction costs and various things, but in 20, 25 years, year 2043, that would put you about $5.74. So, that's, that's where that ends up. Trying to make it straightforward so people understand it. How long would it last? 25 years. This would, and the reason we went around, and we talked to several people about this, and they, they felt strongly there should be some type of a sunset on this, and the reason 25 years is quite a ways out, but there was also some consideration that maybe the council should bond some improvements to get some of these things started. So, typically, those last 20 years, the time you get the fee up and running, see where your income stream is, then you could actually bond for some improvements up, improvements upfront and get some of these things in the ground. Also, very similar to our wastewater system. Annual adjustments are already indicated, takes effect January 1st every year, 2%. The, basically, you know, what, what is that ERU, so I think there's probably most questions about that, but it basically outlines, you know, a parcel's building footprint, their driveway, their sidewalks, et cetera. You divide by the 20, 20, or 2,500 square feet. And then there would be a credit program. We talked about having a credit program as well within this, where it's really not for single-family, obviously, the fee is minimal, so any credit, you know, drive that down, at some point, there would be no point in sending out a bill for that. Plus, just the sheer number of households you have to try to go monitor and see if, inspect, and implement a credit program, be pretty extensive. But on commercial side, there certainly could be that, we already inspect the facilities that are in place, such as detention basins, things like that, on an annual basis, somebody goes by, makes sure they're functioning, does an inspection, we actually report that to the DNR. And so, we already send a person there, so we feel it's a, it's, and most communities have some kind of credit program up to around the 50% mark. And so, I gotta, again, when I get to the example here, and here it is. So, this is actually Casey's out on the east end at, off Eastland and McCarty Street, and so, we, we just looked at this lot and said, okay, you know, there's no, there's no landscape islands or anything like that in here, so basically, it's just the paved lot. That impervious area out there is just under 30,000 square feet. So, you take that number, divide it by 2,500, end up with about 11.92 ERU, excuse me. And so, in other words, that equates to almost 12 houses out there of runoff. And so, times 3.50, so their monthly bill at the Casey's here in town would be just over $40 a month. But again, there's no stormwater, this, this was built in such a time where there was no detention, retention, none of that kind of thing, and so, they don't have any additional stormwater controls on this site. So, the owner, but, but the owner could elect to go back in and try to lower the bill by implementing some of these strategies and save 50% of that bill. So, it'd be more of a business decision, you know, what's it cost to implement those strategies versus what I can save, I'm sure, and there'd be a calculation there to look at and, and see if they could get that down a little bit. But, but many newer developed parcels, I'll say, have stormwater features on them that might qualify for a credit, so. So, that's just one example. I chose that one just because, last time, we talked about some other city that already had one of these up and running, it was a gas station, so it'd just give you the same feel for that. So, with that, happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Marash, from where did this concept or initiative originate, from the staff level or council?
Well, I think at the Public Works Committee, you know, we, we started talking about it, and they said, you know, how can we get more resources dedicated to stormwater? And so, so I think, you know, we hearkened back to our master plan and said, you know, this was the concept, you know, some years ago, and it's nationally-accepted, so they asked us to explore it further, and so, we kept bringing it forward and, and talking about it.
Thank you. And I know from attending a lot of those meetings, it came a lot from the Public Works Committee meeting and from council, but I've heard, out in the community, the perception or, or questions asked, so I want to just raise that, that point of where it came from.
And certainly, there was citizen input through this process, where we initially, especially, I think, in some of the wards, we had some, some flooding concerns, and, and, you know, there's some pretty big fixes to some of those out of the master plan, so I think those, those citizens that we're talking to, their councilmen as well, wanting to know what, what it would take to get more money in this effort, so that I think it was also a push by some of the citizen groups.
Well, it's been on several agendas, but I just wanted to mention that point, just since I have been asked the question, too.
Sure, certainly.
Councilman Prather?
You mentioned that the 25 years is due to the fact that we might need to be bonded because you need the lengthy, the length of 20 years or 20-plus years in order to be bonded, correct?
Well, that's typical. You would do a 20-year, it's basically a loan.
But that's if we decided we want to be bonded. We don't absolutely have to be bonded.
You could pay as you go, certainly.
So we could go for a lower sunset if we wanted to, if we weren't planning on bonding. You said it's going to bring approximately $2 million a year anyhow?
Yes.
So if we decided not to hurry up and get the money upfront, we might be able to collect that money and then address those items as they come?
Yeah, you could go on a pay-as-you-go system. You wouldn't have to bond it. Just give you the option is what the, what the difference would be.
Okay, thank you.
Further council questions or deliberation? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, thank you. I've got a comment and then two questions. And I understand I'm late to the game here, so, you know, I'm trying to bring myself up to speed. I think it's hard to argue that we don't have some members in our community that are adversely affected by stormwater, have significant problems. And I think it's hard to argue that we don't have an old infrastructure that need fixed. My comment is, and I appreciate Mr. Deacon being here and laying out some of the concerns that he has about it, but my concern and my comment is, as I talk to folks going through the community, whether it's developers, folks that own big parcels of property and the, you know, I think that Casey's was a good example of the impact that it's going to have to churches, businesses, other folks in our community. So my concern is that those folks, I don't think are educated enough about the decision to be able to, or the proposal to even be able to come back to us and, and ask the questions. So my, my two questions are, the first question is, we just came through a very interesting and difficult school bond issue, two packages, which is going to increase taxes in this community significantly for some folks. There was an incredible outpouring of support for that and infrastructure and a campaign put together behind that. So I guess my first question is, in a complicated, controversial issue like this, what are we anticipating? If we, as council, were to say, all right, we're going to put it on the ballot, then what's the next step? What initiatives are we going to take to make sure that, that this thing would pass? And then I've got a follow-up question to that.
Okay. Who are you directing the question to?
I guess either to Matt or to Steve. Or council in general, then.
Well, I really don't know how to answer that. I mean, once adopted, the council and city really can't go out and advocate for it. We can certainly educate. Typically, we would have a citizen group that would be interested in advocating for that, and they would get out and start trying to explain the purpose of the election and the fee. Fee, in my sense, it's a fee. And so go through that kind of a process. Now, you certainly could get into a committee that's got resources to do advertising and those different kinds of things, but they couldn't be city funds used for that purpose.
And I could somewhat answer that to Councilman Fitzwater. And, and I really do want to hear the deliberation. I think there's going to be a lot of it on this issue because this is a big issue. So, and typically, I always like to think where I stand on an issue, for one, to lead through the issue, but also in the event that it was a 5-5 vote. Now, clearly, it won't be tonight because there's only nine council members present. But if it were 5-5, and if I did have to vote, that my vote on, on 2017, 8, tonight would be no. And part of it are the reasons that you stated. I think for one, just coming out of, of a very successful campaign for the school bond issue, which is, which is great, but, but the timing, that I don't know that the community would be prepared to take on, and this is simply opinion, this is just my personal opinion, that they would be willing to take on another cost that close to approving this, the other one. And since you brought up that point, that was a point that I had intended to mention as well. And, and the timing as well, if you look at the timing issue, which was brought up in, from council and Mr. Marash's discussion about next April versus this August, that the cost is slightly higher. I mean, the estimate could be if it's 6,000 to 8,000 to put, to add it to the April ballot, and if we're going to pay 12,000 to 18,000, if we're going to do it in August, you know, you're talking anywhere 6,000 to 9,000 to 10,000. It just depends. I mean, that's, those are all estimates. And, and even though we might sit here and say, well, it's only going to be 6,000 to 10,000 or 12,000 if we do August versus April, and we can say what the benefits are, and you start collecting the tax or whatever, and I'm sure council will say what the benefits are and talk me out of what I'm saying now. But if, I think to the general public, it may be a perception of they're having a special, a special election to put this on the ballot when they could wait. And so I think that in itself can be an issue if, if council's wanting this to be successful. So, so I think council will, will counter that, and I look forward to that discussion. And I do think the timing is important. April versus August, I think is important also, coming off of an increase in taxes is important. And saying all that and saying that I would vote no on this, I do want to say to council that, that we have a great, a really great council, and, and there's a lot of, there's been a lot of great discussion and meetings leading up to this point. And that I haven't been a vocal opponent of this because I respect completely the direction, and I understand where council's coming from in, in the discussions that have happened at Public Works. And it's just simply a difference of opinion that I have right now. So it's not really anything more than that. I just see it from a different perspective, and I agree that there is a need for this. But my concern is if this need rises to, to this utility status. And 4172 a month for this one particular example can be very substantial. And I think that's just one example, I think, and that's per month. It's not per year. So I think the numbers are somewhat staggering to business owners. I, I don't foresee the support. The little that has come to me lately in the community has not been support. And I know tonight, there were, there were people talking against it, but in order for this to pass, it's going to take a citizens group to advocate, and, and I haven't seen that. I mean, tonight before us, we're going to put this on the ballot, we have nobody here to speak in favor. Where, where's the advocates? And, and I know we had some very substantial rain events that were once in 50 years or once in so many years, and unfortunately, they've all happened a lot at the same time. And that is separate somewhat from this need. The need is annual, whether we have these 50-year events or not, and there is a need for infrastructure. But that is, is where I stand, and I look forward to being convinced by the, the discussion today. And I think Mahalovich had your hand next, and then Hussey, and then Schreiber. So we'll start with Mahalovich.
I think I forgot my question.
I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead, and I'd like to hear from other council on this issue.
Okay, Councilman Hussey.
Thank you. We can always wait. I mean, people say, what's the harm to wait till April? What's the harm to wait till 2019, 2020, 2021? Like, there have been citizens involved. They've come to Public Works meeting. I've been on the council for four years. My first constituent visit was a stormwater issue. I think that every ward's been impacted by it. And so to make the claim that, that it, it's not an issue, it's not prevalent, just it bothers me because it has been an issue. And, and I know there's a lot of citizens that have put their trust in us to hopefully get it this far. If people have concerns about proposals like this, if these thoughts come out, we can wait and have it spoken up throughout the process, that makes it a bit more challenging. You know, we've had multiple presentations at the Public Works Committee level where the staff has outlined for us how this fee can be implemented, where are the target areas, what it looks like. And it moved through that process. We voted at the Public Works level to send it here. And so I'm guessing these concerns aren't new concerns, and I think that we form better policy and make better decisions as a council if people speak up throughout. I've been vocal throughout to say that I think this is a solid path. Larry and I both asked Matt on a Public Works meeting to come forth with a plan because we've heard from constituents who are frustrated by the fact that we have less than 3 or $400,000 in the budget annually. And some of these repairs are 10, $15 million overall repairs. It's not just a $20,000 patch here and there. And so we asked staff, and this plan that was presented is not a new plan. This is 10, 11 years old, I think, that council walked down this path before of this utility fee. And it, from comments tonight, it sounds like it's been a decades-old issue. And so the idea that this is a, a new issue is certainly not true. And this, to me, seems like a reasonable approach. We've had some stormwater issues who have, which have been highlighted by flood events, but, but the issues that I got talked to four years ago, and I'm sure that previous council members and staff were not flood issues, they were regular stormwater issues. Deteriorating infrastructure in the neighborhood, inlets not working, intersections flooding, these sorts of things that, that happen over time. And so staff has presented to us, the citizens asked us, take a look at it. We've got a plan in place. This is a, a plan to put forth to say, this is a way to address those issues. Let's move it to a vote. I, I think we do run the risk of pushing this off and, you know, those who have been impacted, and everybody's impacted by stormwater, getting a little frustrated with us. You know, I've learned that I cannot predict elections in this community. I think I've been wrong on a lot of them lately. And so I don't sit here and place it on a particular ballot and timing on whether or not I think it's going to pass because I've realized that I'm not that good at that. I, I think we place it on a ballot when we think that there's a need, that we've got a good proposal, that the citizenry has spoken to us, and both sides of the issue certainly do. And we put it out there and say, this is a way to approach the issue and tackle it. I'm not going to sit here and parse over 6,000 to 10,000 on an election. I've heard some talk about voter turnout. If you look at turnout data over the years, we can have contested school board elections and contested council elections and still have low voter turnout. In August of 2011, the city council decided to put the renewal of the capital improvement sales tax on an August ballot. It was the only issue on that ballot. So the city has done, and the county did it that June. So our governmental bodies have put ballot issues on, on election cycles as the only issue in a, in a summer election. And so I think that this is not a new concept of when we do it, how we do it, those sorts of things. I think it's time for us to be proactive on these things. I, every time the rain comes down in a heavy way, I, I know my phone or my email is going to get, get lit up a little bit because issues are happening. And whether or not they're caused by development or higher frequency of these sort of, you know, 100-year flood events that seem like they happen three times in a year, Matt. You know, I, I just know it's a continuing issue, and I think at times, it's important for us to not worry about, you know, tomorrow or the next day, but invest long-term in a community. We've got old infrastructure, and sometimes you gotta buck up a little bit and invest in it. The voters did that in April for the school district, and I think there's a lot of people that want to see us do that on infrastructure. I may not get, I mean, 25 years, you know, God willing, I'm still here to see all of that work be done. But I know we can put better infrastructure in and make this city an even better place and hopefully help out our, our citizens, our homeowners, our property owners, and hopefully have them have less damage to their property. So I would advocate moving forward with it as presented. I think we have had that public process. And finally, one thing I've learned, I had somebody the day before, the day before the school district election, citizen in this community, children in the public schools, come up to me and say, I don't know anything about this school bond proposal. Have they made any presentations to the public? When people want to learn about what's going on, they reach out and do it, and they get engaged. And you're never going to educate and hold sessions that everybody gets in touch with. I think we've done a good job of making this an issue. The media has drawn attention to stormwater as an issue. And I think if we decide to put this on the August ballot, it will most definitely be an issue to talk about for the next few months. I'm not worried about people not being informed. I'm worried about us looking like we're not taking action on a need in our community and having to answer back those constituents and citizens that have come to Public Works meeting, have called us, have emailed us, homes that we have visited, saying, just wait eight more months, trust us, we'll put it on it next time.
Councilman Schreiber?
We, all of us from this council, do have a responsibility to address this issue. I don't think there's any doubt about it. And it does impact the entire community. But I can tell you that I hear both sides as well, and I think that there are a lot of entities, for whatever reason, perhaps through their own lack of taking an earlier interest, that are going to be in shock when they find out what the cost might be. Now, we, we all have to assume that cost. None of us like higher taxes, nobody on this council does. But we know that, that to get things accomplished within a community, that that's the way it's done. It requires all the citizens to be involved. But, but I think that, that it won't harm for there to be a slight delay. And I think that we should all be advocates to, to do our part as not just rely on Public Works Committees and those people, but we all should be advocates to get out there and let people know this is exactly what kind of an impact it's going to have, and here's why. You know, I don't think that the people that were, that were presenters or spoke up this evening in regard and asked us to delay, I don't think that they're necessarily against it. I think that they were basically saying that, that there were issues in certain parks and certain sectors of the community where, where there need to be clarification made and, and specific priorities determined if that's possible. Now, Matt and his staff can't always do that because you take the recent event over on Lincoln Street, nobody was expecting for that to happen, and that's kind of a major situation that's, that's quite costly. But, but if I were to vote right now, my vote would be that, that Mark Schreiber needs to get out and, and do more on my part to inform people more about, about what's involved here, and here's what it's going to cost. Because I truly think that, that we have some various entities within the community, commercial and, and not-for-profit, that really haven't stopped to think about that it is going to impact them, and we certainly want to get them on board. And the way to do that is through all of us being positive in, in informing them of what's going to occur. And, and so that's how I feel about it.
Councilman Mahalovich, too, did you think of your question from earlier? If not, we'll do Prather. Okay, Prather?
I concur with Councilman Schreiber on especially the point that was brought up tonight, that it's going to cost some entities, depending on their size, 40-plus dollars a month. That's the first I've actually seen it quantified. I know the numbers are out there, but it was actually given an example today, and it kind of makes me take pause to what we're doing here. And I, I agree with Councilman Schreiber, maybe a little more time might be, might merit because if I vote on it tonight, I would probably not be voting for it.
Further, Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just had a question. I wanted to clarify, I hope my comments weren't interpreted that I don't anticipate that there's a problem in this community or that there's a good plan being put forward. My concerns are our ability to convince the voters that this is the right time to do it. So my question would be, if we're not successful, and, you know, there was a good group of people that sat around in 2013, said, you know, we need to move this school issue forward. They weren't successful. It took them four years to bring it back to fruition. So I guess my question is, and you know, maybe it's just a rhetorical, what's our backup plan if it's not successful? Because it seems like it's going to take a while to get it back to the ballot. Whereas if we do it what we think is right, maybe we can get this thing through if the community thinks that it ought to come through. So I'm just, I want to make sure we've got a backup plan if it doesn't. Because I'm very concerned about another tax issue, fee issue, costs coming from citizens five months after we passed a fairly significant tax and bond.
That would probably be a question for Mr. Marash. The backup plan, if this doesn't pass, then it's our current plan, which is the amount that's budgeted on an annual basis. And then if there are other ways or other, other avenues of, you know, if you, if the council allocates more to, to... the council allocates more to stormwater, they're allocating less to other, you know, other areas. Councilwoman Wiseman, I don't know if we, if your answer was, was your question answered, Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilwoman Wiseman?
I guess my issue with this is that, how many months ago did we have a stormwater work session, where there were several people that came here specifically to discuss and advocate for this? And we knew going into April that we wanted to have this on the ballot, and we didn't. And we've pushed it off to August. What have we been doing since last year sometime, when, when these people came and pleaded for us to put it on the April ballot? Why haven't we been out there doing this for them? And why haven't we been pleading for them? Why haven't, why didn't we put it on the April ballot? We, we need to do something. They've asked us to do something. The fact that they're not here at this meeting doesn't mean that, that they still don't want something done. I, I, I think just because time has passed, doesn't mean anything has gotten better. And, and, and I guess that's what's so frustrating to me, is we, we've just forgotten about all these work sessions and about all these people that have pleaded to us for help for so long.
And Councilwoman Wiseman, I'll answer that, but it's only on a personal level, so that would be up to probably everybody. But, once it gets to the level of, of a council agenda, it takes on almost a different form. All the work that's led up to this has been important, and I've taken it in and, and understand all the points, but when it was on our last agenda, and as, as the comments that have come to me, just possibly as mayor, they're coming to me and talking about it, have been, what are you thinking? Do you, you know, they're seeing these numbers, and some for the first time, unfortunately. But, the concern is elevated when it's on the council agenda, then it really gets more into the public than the work sessions and whatever. So, those things are starting to come to me, and maybe they're not coming to council, maybe they're coming, maybe they're being more directed at me. But that's just my personal observation. Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd like to amend the, the bill to change the sunset to five years.
I'll second it for discussion.
So, there's a motion and second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilman Hussey?
I'm going to vote no, but, because I don't think that the discussion tonight has been around the sunset piece, for me at least. It seems like the discussion's about timing, and if the timing is to not go, I don't, I don't know if, if sunsetting this in five years, or to five years, does that do anything to address concerns about going in August versus April? Because to me, it doesn't, it, it seems like a, an idea to kick around and discuss at a committee level, which we've done and presented in this fashion, with the opportunity to have the option to bond and these sorts of things. But I've not heard discussion or debate to say that the issue is the length of it as much. It seems like the discussion tonight's been more centered around timing and, and community awareness and, and those sorts of things. So, I'm going to, I would not support that change to it. I'd rather see us pursue what we have in front of us, and if that gets voted down, figure out Ron Fitzwater's option B.
So, there's currently the motion on, second on the table for the sunset. Any further discussion? Councilman Mahalovich?
Well, he's, Councilman Fitzwater's looking for a backup plan. That's the problem, is we have backup, stormwater backup. That was supposed to be a joke. A little levity here would help. The, the backup plan is, is not working, we don't have one. This was trying to make it more palatable, for some that had that as a concern, simply, and I've heard it from a community member in our testimony tonight. So, I bring that forward as maybe it was the, it was the sunset was five years for our sales tax. I was just kind of making it equal to that. And generates, what, $10 million? Is that what our estimate is, $2 million a year? So, yeah.
Any further discussion on the amendment to sunset at five years? Further? Okay, so at this time...
I have a question.
Yes.
This is for Matt. I am going to speak after we get through, because, sorry, I'm going to, I'd like to speak about this, but Matt, the sunset in five years, as relates to revenue, what would that get us? And what could you do with that revenue as relates to addressing stormwater issues in our beloved city?
I mean, one comment is that there is some administration cost upfront that you would have to bear. So, for example, going and calculating the fee for all the commercial properties in town, we estimate there's 3,000 to 4,000 of those. We're working on a process now for that. And then, there's, of course, the finance billing component that would have to be put into place. So, there, unlike the sales tax, that's more direct, we have an accustomed and tried-and-true procedure for collecting that, and so, that, that's a typical collection. This would be a little different, and so, there, there's some cost right off the top that you'd have to bear in that as well. So, that's why having that short sunset would water that down, let's don't make any puns. But, the, but, but of course, if we, if we end up collecting, you know, it's still an estimate. We're using our master plan to give us some guidance on that, and some, and some things we did in the last time, over 10 years ago, we looked at this, to determine that it collects about $2 million. That time, there was no discussion about a, a credit program for commercial, however. That could lessen the impact as well. And so, all those things together, you could say $10 million-ish, but, you know, some of, just like in your area, that we've talked to several residents about, some of those projects are $2 million projects. So, only, you know, if we only collect $10 million, of course, a lion's share would be spent on one or two, could be spent on one or two flood control projects, which, and then it lessens the impact we can do in a systematic way on just your general stormwater system. Does that answer the question?
So, any further questions on the amendment? So, at this time, we're going to vote on the amendment for 2017-8. Do we need a roll call or a voice vote?
Doesn't have to be.
Okay. All in favor, or we, let's do a roll call for the amendment. Mrs. Powell?
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Nay.
Hussey?
No.
Kemna?
No.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Nay.
Ward?
Nay.
Wiseman?
No.
So, the amendment failed, so we're back to the original 2017-8. Is there further council deliberation? Councilman Prather?
Seeing that the sponsor's not here, we, he can't put it on the informal calendar himself, what's the procedure if someone would want to put this on an informal calendar? And saying that, I know that if we did that, it would automatically mean an April election, because we wouldn't have time to discuss it before the beginning of next month.
Without the sponsor present, there is no procedure to put it on the, the informal calendar. You could, you could, you could move to, to postpone to a date certain, but the conclusion, you're right about the conclusion, is that that would mean that the, the August election is, is off the table.
Councilman Hussey?
Is, is a scheduled work, Brian? Is a scheduled work session on May 22nd a permissible date to postpone something?
Any date between now and then would be permissible.
Councilwoman Ward?
Man, I, I would just like to confirm. 20 million calls, complaints? Is that what?
Uh.
20 million?
Our complaint tracking list is $20 million worth.
Okay. That wasn't complaint calls?
Not 20 million calls. No, no.
Okay. All right.
No, that would be a lot.
I'm just trying to, I thought it's a... But, but your complaints have been sidewalk, I mean, streets flooding, sinkholes in people's yards, stormwater pipes rusting and collapsing in on themselves.
Right. And that was really more about the collection system, not necessarily related to flooding. And that, we started that well before these, these weather events, so, over a year ago. And so, it was, hey, I've got a hole in my yard. Well, our priority was, if we have a hole in the street, that, that gets number one.
Right.
Hole in the yard affects one person, but it's important, but we would get back to it.
Correct. And you're only able to go and do patches at this point?
Typically, we try to do a patch. We, and we have the $360,000, you know, on an annualized basis, so therefore, we can go do a small project here and there. We just, flooding, you know, we produce several maps about each event, and, you know, where there might have been, I don't remember the exact number, but maybe we had one event where it was, I think, 30 or 40 homes and businesses flooded, but that was due to heavy rain in one location. May or may not be related to the collection, piping, a lot of it was box culvers, things like that, street flooding, things of that nature, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Graham?
Yes, thank you. I think that I may have actually helped to kick off the conversation and discussion last year, because I know that in Ward 4, we were hit, have been hit real hard with the stormwater issues. I had my first conversation with some residents on Sattenwood and Edgewood area, in which I walked into a meeting in which I thought it was going to be just a family, family members at this meeting. Turned out, it was over 50 residents in this one home to talk about the concerns and the plea for us to do something about stormwater issues. I, in turn, that night, called Matt at home and asked him to meet with us, the constituents of the 4th Ward, to have a conversation more in-depth about what can be done. Matt came out, this time, it's probably about 70 people in the home. So, there are a group of people who are interested in seeing us do something about this stormwater issue, in which they brought up the fact of possibly putting it to a citizen's vote. So, I think that's where the original conversation came from. I went to the area on Cedar Hill Road, once again, in the 4th Ward, in which people were pleading for us to do something. I put them in touch with those individuals in the home down on Sattenwood, so they have been conversating. Once again, I went over to the Foxborough area, which is in the 4th Ward, to have a conversation with those individuals, who were pretty much in tears, in regards to the stormwater issues in which they're having, and the lack of in which we, as a council, are addressing. I went over to Jason Drive, and as I looked at this big sinkhole in these people's yard, once again, that's in the 4th Ward. So, the last stop, which was a couple of weeks ago, I went over to Coventon Gardens, which are starting to have issues right now, which, once again, is in the 4th Ward. So, there are some issues, there are some concerns. So, I will be voting yes tonight to place this on the ballot, and if we don't pass it tonight, I hope that we, as a council, can find at least $2 million in the budget, in the budget, this coming-up year's budget, to start addressing the stormwater issues, if we can't do anything about it. So, that's where I'm at right now, so I will leave it at that.
Further comments, deliberation? Councilman Prather?
I'm not necessarily against the 350 for the households. What hasn't really been quantified until tonight is what it's going to be, and that was a pretty small lot compared to some, of what it's going to tax these big, big, or, tax is probably the wrong word, but, put a fee on these big businesses that have a big footprint. And, you know, if you go from 40 to 60 to $100 a month, that eats into their profits too, so, I mean, that needs to be taken in consideration.
Further questions, deliberation?
I mean, just to counter, I think that, you know, it, it's been quantified tonight. Matt, Matt has not, staff has not been, you know, withholding information like that. Every presentation thus far at the committee level, and throughout this process, has always kind of used the ERU and a multiplier, and so, I don't want the perception to be that, that staff has not shared that this is a multiplied out and there's an assigned value. You know, you, you see it tonight, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't want the perception to be that it's been sneak this through and make everybody think it's $3.50 per property. Now, the flip side of that, though, is that, you know, some of the largest contributors to water entering the stormwater system are often large, you know, impervious surface, large lots, and those sorts of things. And so, there's got to be a balance to figure out how you assess that. We had a conversation at, at the committee level at one point about, you know, are there exemptions that you may carve out, see certain things? And, and it gets a bit muddier when you start doing those sorts of things, and like staff has alluded, it leads to an increase in administrative costs. And so, what ends up happening to a certain extent is that you have, you're spending money to just administer it, and you've got less, you have to raise the fee even higher than to administer, administer the program, the fee, to meet your demand. And so, this seemed to be a national standard, a way to approach this issue. There's a credit program in place to help offset those costs. And so, you know, the $3.50 fee is a number that's arrived after some research, some methodology there, you know, to, to get us to that number that we want to get to. And I would echo Councilman Graham's point, and referencing Councilman Fitzwater's questions about a Plan B earlier. It's a prioritization thing. We, I mean, we authorized financing of $5 million worth of fire apparatus tonight. We see a need, we think it's important. You know, we put the capital improvement sales tax on the ballot and plan to spend that sort of money on mostly capital improvement, roads, streets, these sorts of projects. It could be that a point in time comes where we have to have a true prioritization conversation. Does a police car have to run a little bit longer? Does the fire truck have to stay in service another 10 years? Does the streets not get overlaid in the, in the quantity that they do to help divert some money to stormwater? And we've prioritized other large expenditures within the budget, and have sort of held stormwater where it's at. I mean, if we want to be real about it, that's the conversation to really start having, if this is a path that people do not feel comfortable with, do not think is an appropriate one to go down, you know, it's not just a, you show me where to cut it, it's, let's have, let's have a hard conversation about some of those things, and, and decide where we truly want to invest in. All I know is that the, the status quo is not sustainable. $360,000 is not sustainable. That $20 million just gets greater and greater and greater. And so, I think August is, is an appropriate time. I think we've done it. I think others disagree with that. I sense that there's probably a general consensus that something needs to be done. What that looks like is maybe up for debate. So, I'm at least comforted to know that it's an issue that people feel worth addressing. We just may disagree on how to address and when to address.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Could I get clarification with regard to our work session? Is this a topic that could go before us and, and be voted on during our work session?
There's no reason that the amended, that the agenda couldn't be amended to include this.
I, I sense that this, this is on the balance, this, this vote, and that the, the bill sponsor not being here puts it at a great, greater disadvantage. My, my preference, although I'm not going to make the motion, is to, is to pass it on for the next, for the next work session. However, I'll say this, it puts it a little bit, I hate to throw this in the mix, but I was, I was fine with the justification of how much this was going to cost to put this on the, on the ballot in April, and then the thinking that we could put other things on there is just the same cost, essentially. But, this may remove my support for other items to be put on the ballot if we don't put this.
Any further deliberation on 2017-8? Okay. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Nay.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Five no, four yes.
Five no, four yes, so, motion, I'm sorry, bill fails, correct? All right, 2017-9.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, submitting several proposed amendments to the Charter of the City of Jefferson, to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Adam Mayer?
Yes.
My... My desire would be then to put the following bills on the informal calendar. Since there's not an August election, I think the intent was to only place these on the August ballot if we move forward with a stormwater utility on that ballot.
Are there any objections to Councilman Hussey putting that on the informal? We don't even need objections if, so the bill sponsor, so Ken, you want to put that, Councilman Hussey, on the informal? Mm-hmm. So, 2017-9 is on the informal. Is there any discussion or deliberation on any of those bills tonight? Okay. 27-10 has been taken up. Nothing on the informal resolution has been taken up. Item 16, presentations of the gallery, from the gallery and other topics, we have nobody signed up this evening. Item 17, any council and/or staff discussion of presentation topics? Any new business? Item 18, 19, any unfinished business? Item 20, we need approval of the May 1st, 2017, closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 21, we will go into closed session pursuant to Section 610-021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following: Negotiated Contract, Section 610-02112. Is there a motion? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll take a five-minute break and closed session will be here in council chambers. Thank you.